Go ahead and start the subcommittee meeting for the future of 1500. Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize, I didn't have an opportunity to print out an agenda, but we're gonna stay as close as possible. So, just to lay out what I will allow in this committee, I will allow each member two opportunities to comment on the current subject or whatever the conversation is, and then we'll move on. We want to try and stay within the hour and a half time limit. So, from there, we'll go ahead and get started. Again, welcome to the subcommittee. I'm the chair. The purpose is to understand the current conditions of the building. And I apologize, let me make sure that I was clear. We're talking about 1500 West Galbraith. So... Yeah, that, take your time, take your time. So, we look at the possible future choices for the property, figure out what information we still need. We want to prepare ourselves for something helpful for the city of North College Hill. So, with that being stated, I want to start... So, I would like each member of the committee to introduce herself and just, you know, let me know why you chose to participate. We will start with Ms. Brooks.
Okay. Good evening. Andrea Brooks. Do I need to say my address?
Uh, no ma'am.
Okay. So, I chose or accepted, or requested acceptance of my candidacy for being part of this committee. Because I think clarity and support are really important in making this decision and considering options. I'm on Planning Commission, but not in this role. I'm not officially representing Planning Commission. But I really, so just citizen Andrea showing up, because I think it does take citizen involvement and support to help our administration and council and everyone. So, I'm interested in giving some sweat equity to help move things forward.
Okay, okay. Uh, give me a second. Ms. Gaskins, do you mind taking notes for me? Ms., uh... Ms. Teichester wasn't able to attend, if you don't mind keeping the minutes for me today.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, then we're gonna continue. I want to move to Mayor Nichols.
Good evening. So, your question was why?
Well, I ain't know why.
I was chosen to be on this panel. I do think that it's important that we make good conscious decisions as it pertains to 1500. Just, not just for the betterment of the city, but for our citizens as well. So, I think that we need to put our heads together and figure out what is the best decision for that building? And how do we get to the end, the end process, whatever that may be?
So, I want to go to this side and, is Julian? Okay, Julian?
My name is Gillian Clear. I'm a citizen of North College Hill, and I'm here to kind of, like, I guess, speak on behalf of a couple of citizens who share similar opinions as I do to ideas for the plan.
All right, Ms. Gaskins?
My name is Braille Beverly Gaston, and I currently sit on North College Hill City Council and will keep my seat. And I think that it's important that we all come to the table and discuss realistic plans for this building. And I want to be a part of that conversation and help push things forward.
Thank you. Well, so, I'm Victor Wilson, the current Chair of Recreation Community Development. And I think that this committee is needed so that way we can, you know, give a solid direction for 1500. With that being said, my first question to the committee would be, is everyone on this committee aware of the current conditions of 1500? I'll start with Ms. Julian.
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Ms. Gaskins?
To the best of my knowledge, I have other records and photographs and prior conversations about the status of the building. So, yes, I think that I am clear.
Ms. Brooks?
I am, I've only heard things from attending regular city council meetings. As far as details, I have not seen pictures. And I'm just aware that the building was vacated. Gosh, I'm not even, I can't remember off the top of my head. It's been oh, a year? A year, at least, or over a year? So, when you say current conditions, I know from experiencing having vacant property, when it's vacant and air is not coming in and out, and it's not temperature regulated, things can decline. So, I'm not really aware of the current conditions of the building.
Ms. Nichols?
I am aware of the condition of the building. I have been inside of the building and I have seen the reports of the building. So, yes, I am aware of the conditions of the building.
All right. I, I'm also too aware of the conditions of the building. I've been in the building on numerous occasions. So, I've actually walked the building from front to back. I will start with Ms. Brooks. What I would like, the question I would like was, what information or lack of knowledge of the building that you were missing from?
I, um, there are several pieces of information. Now that you brought it up, I didn't even think about it, but I made to note the current conditions of the building, because I feel like in reviewing some reports, one from Burgess and Nyepel in the past, that was from the end of 2023. So, I'm aware of that report, but pictures about, and again, what the current status of the building is, I'm not aware of. I'm not really, I will say I'm not really super clear on what steps. Just for public safety, number one, I'm not really, I'm aware of asbestos and mold. I'm not really sure what that means from an EPA, I guess, or a public safety or public health stance. I'm not really sure the, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? The, um, how urgent or imminent the current conditions are and where we are as far as urgency in remediating those issues. The other thing is, I have information about what is being stored currently or either behind or in the building in general. So, what use the city still currently has for it, even if the building is not habited? But I think one of the things that I need is, I was given some information about whether the pipes in the building, or plumbing, I should say, not pipes, but plumbing, whether it can or cannot be separated. What I'm not clear on, what that relates to is future possibilities. I've been a little fuzzy about, like, what, what's been proposed? Like, demolish part of it? Is that even an option? Demolish all of it? Remediate part of it? So, I don't know. I guess from an engineering perspective, like, what actual possibilities exist? So, I think that's going to be import, very important to have solid information and really being able to think about actual possibilities for options going forward.
So, same question to Ms. Gaskins.
Okay. Actually, just for the viewers, do you mind repeating your question?
So, my question was, is what information are you missing from 1500, you know, about 1500?
Okay. So, I have a report from 2016 where I'm not sure who got the report, but just for general knowledge, where it says the building is not up to code, the roof is beyond repair, which we are all aware of that. The lack of AC on the west side of the building. In 2016, there were security concerns, and I know we still have concerns for that today. There were, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There were about eight different mold findings back in 2016. And in this report, it says where it is. So, the tax office, administration, council chambers, like, all the different rooms and what mold was found in there. So, what I am missing is what that mold currently looks like in 2025 and how much work is going to be needed to clean it? How much that's going to cost for us to get that cleaned so that if needed to go back into that building, whatever we decide to do, that is done? I would like to know if there are other entities that would be willing and able to do mold and asbestos cleanup and how much that would cost? I'm actually really eager to know how much things are going to cost for us to move forward, because again, the goal of this committee is to move forward. So, that's what I'm looking for.
All right. Ms. Julian?
I know it's a 70-year-old building, so I was curious as to how the foundation is still holding up, considering the damage done to the structure? I know they keep saying, like, good bones, but does that include the foundation? And then what is included in the bones? It was also mentioned that it might not be ADA compliant. So, I'd be curious to know, like, what would need to be done to bring it up to ADA compliance so that everybody would have an equal chance to visit the building? And then also concerns about Wi-Fi? Because I know old buildings weren't really built to allow Wi-Fi to flow as easily as they are now. So, I'd be curious to know if there is anything, like, technological that would need to be considered.
Is that all?
Oh, yes, that's all.
Okay. So, Mayor Nichols?
There's not much that I think that I would need as far as that concern. All of those are, I would, some is valid. And so, considering my position, some of that information, I've heard different talk, but not necessarily something that is written in paper that's been given. I did have a question though about the 2016 report that Ms. Gaston was referring to. And can you repeat, Ms. Clear, what you said about the internet again?
Older buildings, when they're built out of, like, cinder blocks and stuff, sometimes internet doesn't make it all the way through as well. So, I was just concerned that if that was the case to that building, but options...
I will say that there was internet in there. The servers and everything were in there. So, it does have internet capabilities, because we had it prior to moving here. They even have it at, back in the Public Works area. So, it does have internet capability for Wi-Fi and so forth. But, I defer back to the 2016. No, you can go ahead.
So, was you still waiting on that?
We can go ahead.
So, your question was about...
With the 2016. You mentioned the tax office, the administrative office. Are you talking prior to the roof being completed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, in order for them to go back in, that was part of them fixing that roof? Honestly, I cannot remember the, if, the mold, but I'm sure it was removed before they went back into those offices.
Okay, thank you.
Can I mention something else?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I don't want to assume what everyone here on this committee know or don't know. But I think one of the things, as far as you said, what's needed or unknown, I think it would be great to have, so everyone's clear on the same thing and what we're talking about, this report, that report, the year. I feel like time to, for everyone to review or have a timeline and access to any needed documents. I think that's going to be really important for collaboratively, I think, for even in this small group to have some sort of consensus about a way forward or options for ways forward to present those. But it depends on what our specific end game is or deliverable will be as a result of participating in this committee. So, I guess I'd, it's not about the building, but I'd love to know our finish line too. You're anticipating what the purpose, what we will deliver as a committee, what the expectations are for that. So, I don't know if you, we're going to talk about that later. I don't mean to jump ahead, but I just thought I'd put that out there.
Mr. Wilson? To Ms. Brooks' point, I think it's important that we know what our purpose is. So, we can throw out, we missed this, we didn't get this. But primarily, what is our purpose? Everyone up here has different wants, needs, or things that they may, that they need in order to make a sound decision. And so, I think gathering that bit of information and then coming back and saying, and we need to develop the pros and cons as to why, why, because I heard it, why we should demolish versus why we shouldn't? You know, what are the benefits this way? If it's not recreation, then it's city building. I think that idea has been thrown out. It's not just recreation, it's just city building. Not that you ask my opinion, but I don't think that the city should sell property that they have. That's just my opinion. You know, your opinion could be something totally different, have the property. But anytime that the city can acquire any property in order to fulfill what's in that comprehensive plan, we should not sell it, because I've heard, tear it down, sell it. Why would we sell property that's ours? You know how hard it is to acquire property nowadays? So, that's just, you know, we need to get to the root of what, what is our purpose? You know, we would, everyone would love a new building, but financially, can the city afford that? Yeah, there are grants and there are different things out there, but I just think, you know, using wisdom, everybody collaborating, saying, this is what I would like to see, this is what I need, and then, whatever that looks like. Whatever that looks like. I mean, but if we start, I don't think we need to, what's done is done. Nobody's in the building. I don't even think we should be talking about what happened back then, although it's part of why we are here and it's part of the issue. But how do we rectify that issue and move on? Right? How do you, okay, that's what happened. So, how do we get out of that? It's like you in a hole. How do you get out of the hole? Because you can't stay there. So, I guess if we get the information, if, if Ms. Clear, I want to say Gillian, I'm sorry. If Ms. Clear says, "I need this", then Mr. Wilson goes back and say, "Hey, to whomever that person is, this is what we're asking for." But I would just ask that it's not outlandish, right?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
So, and I believe Ms. Brooks said this, and Mayor Nichols, she is alluding to this. So, at the end of this three, four-week meetings, what is the end goal? Anything that we come up with? Are we sending it to council? What are your thoughts?
So, the, it will automatically go to council. I mean, you know, this is just the committee, you know, saying to, you know, figure it out, and then we're going to send what we came up with over to council. It's going to be up to council to, you know, do whatever they have to do as far as moving it forward. But our goal is to send council a completed program. So, like, we should have an end game. Once they get it, they have a solid ideal of where it is that, the direction of 1500. So, that, that's the purpose here. So, that was the reason why I asked each one of you guys, you know, each committee member, what information that you do not have to help make a solid decision once, as far as moving this forward. We, we have more to conversate about. But right now, what I want to do is try and take this first day to get out everything. I don't want you guys to hold back. You know, just like Ms. Clear said, you know, she, she was under the understanding that it didn't meet some, some requirements. Well, let's see, you know, let's make sure that we got that information to show her that it met that requirement. And so, that way she can make a conscious decision as far as what it is that we want to do moving forward. I mean, that's the purpose of the committee is to, you know, determine the future of 1500. So, I just don't want nobody to sit back and say, "Oh, I didn't get this, or I didn't get that, and this is why I voted this way", or, you know, linked this way, and this is why I linked that way. I want, I want to try and make sure that this committee lean in the same direction.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify something?
Uh, yes, you can.
So, I just want to make sure I heard you right. So, the goal, what we'd like to produce as a committee is an actual recommendation
Yes.
to council of what we would, not options for them to choose, but one singular...
Singular, okay. Program. Like, once we hand it over to council, they'll know that this is what the committee came up, you know, with the, you know, for the future of 1500. That's why I named it the Future of 1500, because at the end of the day, once this committee hands it over to council, council has to determine if they want to move with that future or not.
Well, I have additional pieces of information that I would need. I didn't really have that list prepared for tonight, but I would do my best.
So, what I can, what I will say then, Ms. Brooks, is since I'm, my co-chair is not in the building today, but she's paying attention, what I would like you guys to do, that information, everything that you have is what you're missing. I would like you guys to email it over to the co-chair, and that way we can make sure that it get addressed and get that information to you guys, to bring it back to the committee. So, that way, when our next meeting, I'll be able to hand you guys the, you know, the results of the list of information you asked for.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
When you say that, you need to consider that your next meeting is Friday. You need to give them time to gather the information.
Yes, ma'am. So, with that being said, and I do know that my next meeting is on Friday, so I, I myself will just reach out to the individuals after I receive the emails. Once I send it over, I myself will do what I can to try and get that information as quickly as possible. If I cannot obtain it by the next meeting, I will ensure that we get it by the third meeting.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
I don't know when the third meeting is, but as a result of the town hall that we had this year, we produced a new survey. And so, I know the survey will end around November 30th. And I think having that survey result would be really important for our decision as well, because we had some goals in there, so...
I did talk to Ms. Dukes Dean, and she said she would have that at the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any questions or concerns about that as far as the requests for the information that you guys need?
If I may, Friday is a quick turnaround time. So, it just gives us tonight and tomorrow to come up with the things that we need. And Mr. Wilson, you and I have a lot of documents, but we have two individuals and one that's two that are not here that really don't have anything. So, do we want to keep our Friday date? Or should we give it a little more time so that people can come up with their questions so that they're robust and healthy?
Well, I will leave that up to the committee as far as if y'all want to try and reschedule the 21st. If not, like I said, I don't mind putting in the work to, you know, try and locate this information. I just don't think it should, it'd be hard to reach out and get some of the things that's, that's asked for. So, I mean, that's just me personally.
Yeah, I understand that. But I think depending on what they ask, it may require more research, depending on, you know, and the depth of, you know, what the ask is. Absolutely. And I think it's fair that any information that an individual asks for is shared amongst the group, so they will have time to review it as well.
Yes. Yes. So, I'm definitely, everything that I can be, okay. So, other than that, like I said, I'm, I will do what I have to do on my end to ensure that every committee member's information or questions for information is resolved. So, moving forward...
But I would suggest that you ask first, if they send it, and if they can get it, and you can turn it around.
Yes.
That would be my suggestion. Sorry.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
If, if anyone knows tonight what questions they have, and maybe if they send it to you, if the sooner you get it to them, if they can get it to them and turn it around by tonight or tomorrow, I don't know what their night is like, but...
Committee members? Yeah, can I hear that?
I will do my absolute best, yes.
I mean, I can only ask for what you can do.
I definitely cannot give you the list for sure tonight, because I want to really make sure I understand. But what, what, but I can, I'm going to try to commit to tomorrow, to get, by tomorrow, email you. But I will say what will help is that I clearly understand what the possible options are. I feel like that could either take away some of the requested information I need. So, I've heard different things. Tear down the whole building? Hold it. Tear down the whole building? Sell it. Leave it at, as is, sell it. Tear down half of it, or just secure half of it and rebuild administrative offices and create maybe recreation? Like, I would really like to know what that menu of options really is, because that will help narrow my questions or research or the information I think I need. That would be, so if we could agree, I would lean on, I would lean on council and Mayor Nichols to really make that clear, because I, yeah, even attending some council meetings, it, it's fuzzy. It, it's fuzzy for me, like what the real options are, so that would be really great. And if you need time for that, or if you know.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
I think that, and I, I, I see Ms. Underwood, I don't know if you're watching, but I see her rolling her eyes at me. I think it's best to know where's the funding going to come from, because if we have funding that is not restricted. And then the possibilities honestly are endless, but if we are utilizing, um, sorry, utilizing funds that are restricted. Then that narrows down what we can do with this building. So I think we need to know that as well.
Mr. Uh, Wilson?
Yes.
If we're using, um, if we don't use the dollars that are restricted for this building. The other funds are not endless, it comes from general fund. And so then you have the option or the possibility that we ha, if there's a grant available. If it's not necessarily that, it may be and we may not get it, not that we don't qualify for it. So I think it just depends on what's available. Like right now, these dollars, and they are only to, um, for restorative purposes. Not to tear down. So if we are to tear down a building, any part, we would use.
Yes, go ahead.
General fund.
You, you fine, come on.
We would use general fund, or we would use, um. Grants if they are available. Otherwise, so, I mean, that puts the options everywhere, all around. So it's just about making a solid decision on, okay, we're going not tear down. And use what we have, or we're gonna demolish and go look, right?
All right, uh, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, uh, Mayor Nichols, I apologize, I did hear that. Um, I would like to take this second and allow one of our, uh, committee members to introduce herself.
Hi, my name is Vita Genius.
So, um, she is a, uh, citizen. And she was appointed to this, uh, committee. So, um, like I said, we'll do what we can to catch you up, you ain't but thirty minutes, so. I'm pretty sure we can get it off CRC as far as where we, uh, where we was at before. Um, so quickly. And where we at right now is, um, I asked all committee members to, um, email a list of information. That you will require in order to make a solid decision for the future of, uh, fifteen hundred. Um, if there's anything that you find that you don't have, uh, knowledge of, or you need to, uh. Get some type of understanding of, please write it down and email it to us. So that way we can, uh, try and answer all your questions and bring them back to you. Uh, provide you with the information you would need to make a, uh, solid, uh, decision as far as moving forward with, uh, fifteen hundred.
Okay.
All right. So I would like to, like I said, I apologize, Mayor Nickel, what you done? Okay, so, um, back to that. Again, is there, you know, any misunderstandings or any questions, you know, about as far as this process right now? To, you know, to get us to the next stage?
I have one question, but did you have a question?
Uh, yes, I do.
Yes, go ahead.
Since there's so many different options and so many options when it comes to funding. I feel like, once we start to narrow down what we want to do, we're gonna have more questions. Would it be possible for us to kind of explore some of the main options and then come up with a list of things for each? Option that we would need to make a decision?
Um, I mean, that's, that's great, uh, sounds real good. Um, to, to be honest, I believe, I believe that we should have had a list of, uh, optionals. You know, as far as the building. But. No, go ahead, Mayor Nick.
I think it's up to us to make that list, to decide what those options are.
Okay, man, well, well, like I said, I mean, I don't wanna jump ahead of myself, I mean, to, to, we're into it. We just got into it, and then I believe that, like I said. Go ahead and make your list of the information that you would need. Whether it be, you know, for demolition or remodeling. Just make that list, it's just questions that you would need to answer to be able to lean in any direction. And then that way, you know, provide them to us and then, you know, allow us to, a chance to try and, uh. Provide you the information that you would need to, to be, help you make that decision. That's what, like I said, so. The questions could be for remodelingization or tearing it down, you know, just put them in there and then we'll go from there.
And not necessarily remodel, just.
Yeah.
To stabilize it. I know we don't like that word, but. Inhabitable, make it where people can go back in, just say that.
Yes. Stabilization, remodel, I mean, to me, it's almost.
Mr. Wilson, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so again, you and I are OGs when it comes to this building, because we talk about it almost every council meeting. We talk about it off camera, on camera. But my question for you is, how long will this committee remain active? Because it can get to the point where we need more meetings. So I just wanted to know what your estimated end goal is.
So, so I, I, my, my estimate, I would like to be able to send a recommendation over to council. By December. Um, which, whether it be the second one or the first one, I, I really wanna try and get it to the first one. So, I mean.
What are those dates?
That is. So the first one for December will be the first of December.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Think that is entirely too fast.
I agree with Mayor Nichols.
Too fast.
So what would you like?
Because you have to be able to make a sound decision. I get what, what you're trying to do. I'm not sure if the intent. Is to see if they can make a decision with those funds that are out there, but.
Is that a possibility?
So. Also, um, I, to be honest, uh, when it comes to that. I mean, that's not even a, uh, that's a separate conversation for, uh, a different committee. Um, but the, the, what, what my goal was to send over an understanding to council. You know, as far as what was, you know, what came out, how is it that they would like to see this building move forward? It's a possibility that I, I, you know, I'm not looking to where I'll still be sitting here to make that decision. Is, I'm just wanna be able to send something over to council. Rather be, you know, the current council or the new council that, you know, ended up ultimately deciding on it. I just wanna be able to send something over solid to them that they can actually say, okay, well, we don't have to. Put so much debate time into this, like it really was broken down and, and given to us. In an area where we can say, hey, yay or nay.
So I guess what I'm saying is, you said the first meeting in December, which is December first. Today is the nineteenth, you have another meeting scheduled for the twenty first. I'm not sure if anyone will be able to meet next week.
Okay, so, I mean, if they can, like I said, if we can get it to them, uh, over to council about like the fifteenth. I'm not, that's the last council meeting of December. I'm not, like I said, I'm not. My whole goal is, the end goal is just to send over something solid to council that they can look at.
Understandable. I just was saying, next week is the holiday week, and I'm not sure if anyone will be able to meet.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, I'm just saying, we can, I will make all adjustments as possible to where we can fit each other's schedule. And like I said, I'm not, it's not something that I'm looking to be like, oh, yeah, I did this, I got it done. No. I'm just looking to make sure that council, when they get the opportunity to look at it, they can honestly say, well, hey, they did the footwork. This is what they presented to us.
No, I, I absolutely understand that. I feel like the changes that the city has experienced. As with any job or whatever, when, when someone or something new is starting. You lose a little history, you lose, that you, like, you need that acclimation time in the beginning, and so. Um, that, I understand, I, I understand why.
So, um, any, any more questions, any? All right, um. Don't give me that. That look.
I'm waiting.
All right, I was about to say, I was thinking the same thing, so. So. With all of that, um, my next, what I would like to know from the committee. Next is. Just give me a second, I apologize. All right, so, um, again. Like I said, we, you know, everybody, please, any questions or answers. My next thing that I wanna talk about as far as, uh, fifteen hundred. Is looking at the, um, first steps. Uh, I believe they, we were issued or sent, um, a stabilization package. Uh, as far as what it was to stabilize that building. Do, uh, Ms. Julian, do you have, I'm, I'm sure you're just a citizen, but were you in any of the meetings where? There, um, that information was presented?
Like the stuff from R W B?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Um, I believe I was there, but I don't remember if specific numbers were discussed.
Okay, um, well, I, 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 I believe, I don't wanna get into the numbers. I actually wanna get into, uh, what was all included in the stabilization. So, um, I, I, you know, I believe. Ms., Ms. Gaskins?
Yes, sir.
Do you, did you, you have that information too, right?
I do, I don't have it with me, so a couple of things, if.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so, from what I remember, cause I don't have it in front of me right this moment, um. To stabilize the building, the mold and asbestos would be taken care of. And whatever was causing the mold and breaking down the asbestos would need to be fixed. Those were the main things that stuck out to me from the A one A or A I A contract from R W B. Um, but it was a list of things that were on there, and there were some things that weren't exactly spelled out. So I think that would be really good to have it spelled out a little bit more. Um, so those will be the first steps of getting the building together. And I just, for those who are viewing, it's important that, no matter what we do with this building. We have to remediate the asbestos. From my understanding, being on council and speaking with others. It, it's best to do the mold and asbestos at the same time. So at the end of the day, that's the first thing we have to do, no matter what, is that mold and asbestos.
Okay, so, uh, but you do have a clear. Understanding of what was laid out in the, uh, R W B, as far as what they were saying that they will provide us for the service.
Correct.
All right, so Ms. Julian, did you have an opportunity? Like I said, I know you've been to some of the meetings where. Did you have an opportunity to come to that meeting where that information was provided?
I believe I was. If I wasn't physically here, I would have watched it.
Okay.
Um, but I remember, like, there's definitely discussion as to how far stabilization actually meant. Um, and it sounded pretty dependent on whether we were gonna keep the building or demolish it, from what I remember. Um, and I remember there was like discussions about like the HVAC system and potentially like windows, doors. But it wasn't really made very clear exactly how much was absolutely required by law. Versus how much we had to do for one project versus another project.
Have you?
Genius.
Yes, ma'am. Do you have the, uh, information?
Um, I do, but I do not have it with me at this time, but I, I do have the information.
Okay, do you have an understanding of, of what, what services that they were, um, offering to provide us for that, under the stabilization?
No, but I do, um, I agree with, um, Ms. Gaskin. It was talked about the asbestos and the mold and cleaning it up together, but.
Okay, um, Ms. Brooks?
So as far as the proposal, um, I'd love for somebody to give me clarity, but my understanding is that the proposal includes. Asbestos abatement, mold remediation, removal of contaminated materials. Interior demolition, leaving the structure. Roof replacement for the west wing, repairs on the east wing roof, window plus storefront replacement. I'm not one hundred percent sure what storefront replacement in layman's terms, what that means or what that looks like, but it's included. So that's a clear, that's why I need a little time to make sure I'm asking you for the things and understanding that I need. Um, gypsum board repair, only where the mold, only where, um, where there's mold. Uh, or rot, that's the only place where it's required. Kills ceiling of the block walls, um, but not finished paint. My understanding of what's not included, so they explicitly do not include building out offices. Construction of walls, office layouts or meeting rooms. Electrical upgrades beyond what's needed for stabilization, HVAC system replacement. Plumbing upgrades, finishes, including floor, flooring, carpet and tile, furniture, technology or infrastructure. ADA compliant restrooms or accessibility fixes, any final condition suitable for public service operations. So that's not included, that's my understanding. So I would need clarity if there is some variance or I have a misunderstanding. And again, um, gypsum board repair, as far as what I know, that's drywall repair. That's a generalized statement, um, and also storefront replacement. I don't really know from a builder or contractor perspective, what that exactly means, cause I'm a layperson, so. That would be im- important to know. And to me, so that we can have a full picture to understand costs, grant all of that. To me, I think that, um, if that's not included. Then what, how long would it take? How much would it be to get those things? Cause for it to be habitable and usable, for whatever purpose, but usable, a, a structure. How much do those things cost?
That's an excellent question.
That, that would be one of my questions, which I'll make sure I add that, so you have it in one place. So you don't have to cherry pick from all the different things, but I will make sure I include my questions. About what information is needed in my email to you about that. But if anyone has information, did anything I say about what's included or not included? Either of the council persons or people or where, is, is any of that wrong?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, it's, it sounds almost like what the, the document that we received stated. I just didn't wanna misquote and, cause I don't have it in front of me, but yes, that's, that was my understanding over the course of several months. What was not included versus what was included, yes.
All right, so, I mean, this is the first time, you know, I've heard of something that, uh, wasn't included. Other than the, uh, HVAC system. Um, so, you know, of course, that they went back and made sure that it was, you know, that it was visible in there as far as that. But I'm just saying that, um, that's helpful for, you know, to find out what it is, you know, and get that information. Um, so is that all for you?
Um, and I think as we talk about things, I've heard the word white box state thrown around, and I would say even in the developer or the construction community. I've heard variants in like what that looks like in layman's terms. So clarity on, and maybe that's it. Because if that's what the things I mentioned from the R W B proposal, or quote, or, I'm sorry, I'm not using the right language, A one A, is that what it is? Is that what it's called? What they sent us? Okay, so for that, um. I just lost my train of thought, sorry. Oh, white box state. Um, I think that language was. Oh, white box state, um, I think that language was used maybe in that quote or proposal, um. So I think, again, an explanation, um. So may, maybe some expertise, like this is what that means, so when we get to using jargon for particular fields. If it's subjective, that could be really important.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Gaskin.
To piggyback off of Ms. Brooks, I think, and I have asked before. It would behoove us to have an engineer come and talk to us. I work at Hamilton County and I work with parents all the time, and they don't know what I'm talking about, so I have to kind of break it down for them, I'm the professional. So we could sit here all day and talk about what a white box state is, but I, I would like. To have a conversation with either the one that's going to do it or someone who was working closely with that, so we have a clear understanding. I think, um, but you know, when people talk about trust or distrust or whatever, blah blah, that's because we have the lack of knowledge. So if we had someone to come in and give us all of the details, this is what a white box state is, this is what this A one A contract is actually saying. This is not there because it's implied here, that would help us move forward. So that's another reason why I think having multiple meetings in time to get the information we need is very important. Because I think all of us up here want to make a good decision, but it has to be an educated and sound decision, that's all.
Could there be a person, um. Added to the committee, so they're there for not just one time, but as we have questions, is that, I don't even know if that's possible, is it?
Um, I, I will reach out and see what, if it is possible, um. Uh, like I said, the goal is to, to try and hand over to council a solid understanding. So, I mean, I want to try and eliminate as, as much as possible. So, um. I, I, I believe. Like I said, with, with, with that info, with the current information, I mean, is everybody understand if we can just, you know, somehow get that over. And then that way, we could, I could start positioning us to, um, get the information we need to help make that solid decision. I mean, like I said, at the end of the day, we, we still got to figure out which direction, um, so that, I mean, the, the, the conversation will be. Between the, uh, stabilization, remodeling, or, or demolition. And that's the two conversations that we're gonna have to have, um, and like I said. We have to figure out how does it benefits North College Hill in both angles. So, you know, just remember, let's keep an open mind and see what, you know, see what we come up with. And now to allow us to come back to the next meeting and start, um, you know, punching at this bag.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
But would you agree that it would be helpful if we had a contractor come in and walk us through this, what is best?
So, um. To be honest, uh, Ms. Gaskins, I can't really answer that question out loud right now, I have to take and. Actually think of what I can do to help us. I don't know if it's necessarily have to be that engineer or in particular or someone in particular. But if it's a way to provide a clarification of information. Like if we can get information that clarifies what it is that we're trying to, um, seek in order to make that decision. And the only reason I say that is because I don't know if they, if we will be able to get someone out of their office to come in and make our meeting. We'll have to try to see if we can make that happen.
Uh, oh, may I make a suggestion?
Yes, go ahead.
Um. R W B is our vendor of choice, right, so if the owner, if Mr. There you go, is available, whatever he, whatever his availability is. I would be more than willing to adjust my schedule to meet his needs. Because I think he is the expert and I think he could really drive us into the right decision. So, hey, if he wants to bring his turkey and macaroni and cheese on a Thursday, Thanksgiving Thursday, I will bring mine too. But whatever is best for, um, him to come and speak to us as a whole, I am willing and able to accommodate.
Right, well, thank you, I'll do what I can, see what we can make happen, and, um, please don't hold us to no promises. I'm saying we'll do what we can, and like I said, everybody has an agenda and schedule, so. We'll reach out and let them know that this is was, is what we're trying to see if we can get to. So we can get to our point, um. So, again, just want to make sure anybody, you're missing anything about the stabilization. Ideal, whatever it is.
Um, I did have a question, um.
Go ahead.
Um, it was mentioned that R W B was the vendor of choice, I was just curious what led us towards them. Because I don't remember if, if it was discussed, if they had reached out to a couple of different vendors. Um, was that something that council had come to a decision on as a whole that R W B was, who are going to be working with? Um, and then if not, would it be possible for us to kind of shop around when we come to the final project? Um, just to make sure we're, I guess, fully informed of all possible costs and all possible options through.
So, so, um, again, when it comes to the, uh, R W B. And the ARPA funds, that's in another committee, that's not in this committee. This committee is only, can talk about fifteen hundred and the future of it. And as far as your question, your question is a legitimate question, but it's in the wrong committee. So, uh, I mean, as far as, like I said, I just can't talk about them particular funds or, you know, that stuff. Because it's just not in this committee right now, so like I said, as far as any, is understanding the stabilization. You know, of what we was offered as far as the stabilization of fifteen hundred. Like I said, anything that's dealing with fifteen hundred, when it comes to the future of it, we can talk about in this committee. So, like I said, uh, you know, moving forward, that's just it, as far as that one, that's just over in another committee, um, Mayor.
Oh, I just, when you was going down the line, I just wanted to.
No, I, I'm sorry, but you were next.
No, um, so, I just wanted to touch on a couple of points. I think what Ms. Brooks described was a renovation. With the wants and things that you had in there, so I understand that there were different steps. It was never to the point of, what, this is my opinion, what you offered and what you said, it, that the. Contractor or what have you did not say were items of a renovation. So, from my understanding of how this was presented, it was to stabilize, to bring to order, to stable. Right, so, we can go to the definitions, so many different definitions of what stabilized means, but in this case is. To bring back to an order, right, um, so, it was not half the roof, it was the entire roof. So I pulled this up on my phone from what the exhibit A, it says. Which is what was asked. Uh, I think it was insinuated or purpose that we use what Nipe and Burgess said. So that was included in one of the documents that was presented to council. And hazardous materials, remediation of asbestos and mold and contaminated waste removal. That's A, B was roof repair and replacement. C was interior, because I think someone said something about knocking down walls, interior drywall removal. And replacement were necessary for remediation and stabilization. Um, and then it's replacement removal of windows, doors and seal, seals. And cleaning and servicing of the existing HVAC system. And then finally, there, I think it had been asked that once all that was done, they come back and do another environmental study. To see what the condition was afterwards, so. I know someone said something about the HVAC, the walls being knocked down. All of that was presented to council in one of the exhibits and one of the pieces of legislation, um. So I don't know if that answers some of those questions, but. When you gave all of those things, those are renovations. We weren't at renovations, we were just trying to get the building. That's step one, because we always talk about, we talked about it several times, or council talks about it. What's the first phase? First phase is this, that would be something second phase, that's not included in that. First proposal, that would be next, okay, so now, sort of like, I hate the references, when you build a house. You build it from the ground up, that's phase one, then phase two, you gotta decorate, it's sort of the same with this, phase one, you take care of the problem. Then once the problem is done, then you say, okay, how we get people back in here? How do we get them to actually move back in here, if that's the option, right? So that's why those things weren't in that actual proposal, because that's another step.
Oh, I, um, I'll wait.
No, I'm done, go ahead.
So I would agree, I feel like, because my, my, myself included. In the jargon that gets thrown around, if there are folks hopefully watching, and for all of us. To say and be very clear about it, not going off what's been said or in legisla-, because I don't know. And there may be other people, but I'll, can only speak for myself, I'm not aware. So if it's backtracking or repetitive for some people. Sorry, not sorry, I think it's very important that we clarify and say these things. Um, so I would just ask for patience with the things that I'm looking for clarity, because, um. I've only dipped a piece of my toe in the water of like development constru-, learning all these things, let alone legislation and council, all of that. Um, and so I'm also, if, if the public is watching. Um, I hope I'm also asking questions as I seek my own clarity, that things are broken down in a way. Because you don't know what you don't know. So the fact that I said what was not included was HVAC system replacement. That doesn't mean repair, but I think it's important to say. Um, to really be clear about what we do as we lay out these options, and I hope. This will be written and not verbal, whatever we submit is very clear. So I think, um, for me, and then I'll be quiet, I would really like. To know what the actual options are. I'm not even worried about price, just in, on this earth, what are the options? You know what I, you know what I, like, yes, there's lots of things we could mention that could possibly happen, but generally, what are the options? Fully demolish, or no, partially, or stable, like, I need to know as, as. So that we can, in, for me, it needs to start there. I need to know what those options are, uh, tell me my menu first. And then as we discuss things, I can keep notes and plug and play, like, okay, that would go with option A, that would go with option B. Or that would go with all three, and that will help me to analyze all of the data, all the pieces that are involved. Um. For me, I can't speak for council or, or citizens, but even the town hall and some council meetings that I've been present for or watched. I, I have felt very confused. And, and I'm not really sure, I would love if we could do options, if we've got. Thirty, less than thirty minutes, that would be super helpful for me to give you your deliverables that you asked for. The emails and for urgency, um, and just to have a clear path going forward for me, that's my request. Is to, as a group, discuss all of the options.
Alright, is that, anybody else?
Um, sorry, Mr. Wilson, I do have a comment, um, I agree. Ninety-nine point nine percent was Ms. Andrea Brooks, but for me, I need to know. Regardless to what grants we have or we do not have, how long is this, it's, how long is it going to take us to do phase one? How long is it going to take us to do phase two, and where is the money coming from once we start looking at phase two? Because the things that she listed that are considered renovations, that's going to cost, and how much is that going to cost taxpayers? All of that goes together, I would love to get a Birkin bag, but if I don't have the funds to get a Birkin bag, I'm not getting it, so. That's important to this conversation, and making sure we understand terminology and what is actually possible for our citizens.
Okay, so, uh, with that being said, I'm gonna ask, uh, I'm gonna start with Mayor Nichols. And I'm gonna ask, um, if you can list a couple of options that you had in mind for fifteen hundred. Let me start with you, Mayor Nichols.
You said a couple of?
Yeah, I mean, more than, uh, just list the options that you had in mind, if, if you have any options in mind for fifteen hundred.
Well. I would like to see the building restored, um, and used for multi purposes, um. I said it earlier, I don't think that the property or the building should be sold, I do not think that it should be demolished. Um. There are a lot of options that you could put in there, I mean, there are some. I won't speak on just of yet, because it's here, but I need to write it down like I typically do. But if you asked me my first option, it would be to restore the building, um. And that would be phase one.
The whole building? When you say restored, do you mean the whole?
The whole building, because there are, uh, there's potential on the other side, a lot of potential before. That side was shut down, we had different vendors operating out of there, um. So if it can be restored, that's what I would like to see, I would like a new building. But I don't know financially the city even with, um. Grants, loans, bonds, that we can sustain that type of payment.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
In a minute, I just need her to finish up, just give me a second. Are you done?
I'm done.
Alright, hold on. Ms. Julian?
Um, so, I like the idea of kind of following what our comprehensive plan suggests, which would be to tear down the existing building. I know within the comprehensive plan, there's a suggestion for affordable housing, but due to the impound law, I don't see that as a possibility. Um, so I think it would be a great idea to use that entire space to build a new city center. Um, along with potentially a couple of spots for like seniors or. Like a beautiful green space where the public can gather, um, potentially be used for the food truck Fridays. Um, and also kind of create like an exciting opportunity for some good press for the city, if we rebuilt and had this beautiful new green space. Um, and it doesn't have to be built like within a year, this could be like a. You know, in the next two years, we're going to save up for demolition, and then a few years from now, we're going to go ahead and start on the phases that we've worked out. That way it wouldn't be such a shocker of a bill immediately, and it could be something to work towards, rather than immediate implementation.
Okay, are you finished?
Yes, that's it.
So, um, Ms. uh, Genius?
Well, um. I agree with Mayor Nichols, I think, um, if we can restore and establish this building. Without ha- having to use taxpayers' money. Uh, me, one, being a citizen, uh, and a homeowner of North College Hill for twenty-four years. Um, then to me, I think if we can go that route. I think, uh, as a start, we should consider that, and then years to come, um. If we can, um, get more money or grants or whatever. Um, then, just go fur- further, you know, take it from there, but right now, I agree with Mayor Nichols. To, um, I think it will be benefiting to restore and establish the building as of now.
Alright, so Ms. Brooks?
Um, I, I don't know, you, you say you're, the question is what would I like to see there? I would like to see something that makes sense, that's it, that's all, I. That makes sense, and what I'm learning, if you ask me about my own personal property at my house, I would be like. Build multimillion dollar home, so my property value goes up. Is that realistic, considering North College Hill? No dig, but is it real, is it based in reality, the development? The way this world works with development, it's not about a magic wand. So what I would really love is for us to talk about, or decide tonight, very basic. Not magic wand thinking, as in fix the whole building, fix only the east wing and remove slash repair the west wing. Tear it down and build something new, tear it down and allow another type of ability, um, or development, do basic only stab- Do basic only stabilization. These are my possibilities I'm giving. Or, um, maybe move city offices somewhere else temporarily or long-term, maybe hold the, the property. There's pros and cons to, that I can't speak intelligently to at this particular point. But I feel like the basic direction. So when you say restore, you would love to, I heard that last part, you would love to, I think the second part was to like rebuild it. It's almost like tear it down and keep the same purposes, but a brand-new facility.
But that's not reality, in my opinion. It's not reality.
Right. I, I hear that.
Without first that breaking the bank. Right.
True, because we, we do need to swim in the pool of reality, absolutely. Um, but I would love, as part of this process, for us to, um, be able to, um, inform ourselves and kind of do a little vision casting and research as to what are some possibilities? And I love that you brought this group together. Not so large, not public, and not that it's not public, but I mean, a lot of people signing in to say ABC. Um, so I really think kudos, great idea. But what would be helpful for me is if we all agree on what these base options are. I need that, or I'm not gonna be able to be most help at a next step. That's it.
Ms. Gaskins.
I need, I need to know where funding is coming from. And I know Ms. Brooks just said, we're not talking about magic wands, but I, when I look at the comprehensive plan, I wanna follow that. And I wanna make sure that the citizens have what they need. Rather, that's a green space, whatever it is. So there's a lot of information that's still out there that I believe we will have on our next meeting to kind of help make an informed decision. At the end of the day, no matter what we do, we have to remediate the mold and asbestos. So that is step one. Where is that funding coming from and when can that get started? So that we can say, this is what we wanna do with the building. We have to do the basics first. It's just my opinion.
All right, any, any, anymore? Anybody got anything else?
I do, but I don't know if it's relative to this, because, um, are we talking about, to Ms. Brooks' point, what, what we'll walk away with today? Options, rights, rights. So, so when you say that, I hear, or in my head, I'm going, option one, we're gonna send a note to council to say, go ahead and remediate the mold. That's option one. Or we've decided to just tear down. Right?
I, I was actually thinking, um, a smaller step than that. I was thinking for this group, before we get to next steps, just possible next options, um, to clearly, uh, like, so we all know these are possible destinations. We don't have all the details, but at a broad, just starting place, fix the whole building, demolish the whole building, fix this part and whatever details are necessary, minimal. Um, or fix this part for a plan or a never, another phase later. Only stabilization, hold the property. Again, demolish, hold the property. A- as far as immediate, if, if we get into the master plan and, um,
We all wanna see the master plan exhibited. I think they said green space, but if I'm not mistaken, the green space plan was down the street, uh, if I'm not mistaken. It could have been two, I just don't remember. But I think the green space wasn't in that area. So, and I think now, not that I'm confused, but you said you want us to walk away with possibilities, but you said you couldn't make a decision because you don't have enough information.
I would just, to, as of tonight, not our endgame, but tonight, so that I'm aware of the, the directions that we're considering. I can think about it, see what information I do and I don't have with that particular goal or endgame in mind.
Mr. Wilson?
Point one, or option one, option two. It's like, that's all I need tonight is a basic, where we say the things that we are considering.
Ms. Gaskins.
I think when, um, the confusion comes in, because for about a year, we talked about what we can and cannot do with restricted funds. We had ARPA funds that could, um, be utilized so that we can move forward with the project. But if ARPA funds are off the table, let's just, if they're off the table, there is, whatever, we can do whatever with the building. So the possibilities are to restore the building, stabilize the building so that people can go back in there without being, getting sick. Um, there's an option to, um, demolish the building, demolish half the building. All of that stuff is still a possibility. I think what's most important today is knowing, um, the directions we can go in with knowing that we have to abate the mold and asbestos. That's number one. No matter what, we have to abate the mold and asbestos. So where does the funding come so that we can do that, so that we can put programs back in? Or we can tear the building down? We have to talk about the mold and asbestos.
Okay. All right, so I only, I only gave everyone a chance to speak. Now, uh, I'm gonna take this, uh, last fifteen to try and, uh, just pretty much direct our, our committee. So with all that information, um, I'm, I'm really asking the committee to, if you could commit to give me that information as soon as possible.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson, excuse me, but we didn't hear from you which, which your thoughts were.
Yeah, that, that's what I was gonna go to. So, uh, again, everyone did, you know, if you can get that information to me. So, um, uh, my thoughts, where I sit, uh, when it comes to the, uh, fifteen hundred, I mean, one, we're in a good position because we own the property. It's ours. We didn't pay anything. We, uh, didn't come out of pocket for, you know, to obtain a property. And last Mayor Nichols stated before, it's very hard to purchase, uh, property around here. Um, I'm thinking in the best interest of North College Hill, would be better to utilize the property until we can get our money, you know, to get the money that we would like to build a new facility. I, I'm, I'm too, want a brand-new facility. But I do know that North College Hill cannot sustain, um, taking on a, a, a bill right now at this time. Not that they can't do it, it's just at this time, it's not in the best interest, you know, to put North College Hill citizens and residents in that position. So, you know, saying, with that being said, my idea would be to use the property that we have to get what we want. So, um, I mean, of course, if we, you know, um, stabilize the unit, bring it to a use, you know, safe and usable, um, condition, then we can actually move forward with, uh, the ideals that are presented. Because like I said, first and foremost, you gotta put it in a position for us to do something with it. And it's not in the position for us to do anything with it. So let's not, you know, let's just remember, as we walk through this, we are not in a position to do anything with the property right now, because it's, it's damaged and it has to be fixed. We all know what the primary, uh, issue that caused the damage, you know what I'm saying? And, and without fixing that primary issue, you can continue taking on more damage, even after, you know, saying, if it's not done properly. So, um, with that being said, it's like, our, we, our options here on the table are right in front of us. I, I, I just couldn't lean to demolition, only because we're just not in a position to tear down and put it back up. I don't want the property to sit there and look at us stupid. It's already been doing that for the last semi-years already. Like, let's, let's not continue doing that again. As we tear it down, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, we, we clean everything up and, you know, remove everything. But what do we have to start the rebuilding right away? There's nothing there to start right away. So again, we'll be sitting there, letting this unit, you know, sit there until we figure out or get the funds. Well, let's not do that. Let's make sure that we get some type of usage out of it until we can get where we trying to get to. So, and, and, you know, just when y'all guys go home and, you know, y'all take and put this down, just think about it. You know, at the end of the day, do we want this building sitting there just smiling at us like, hey, you know, uh-huh, y'all can't come in? Or do we want this building actually doing something? You know, having programs and stuff that's there in existence? And as we move to get a new unit, we have programs that can, that, um, investors or the, or grant writers or whoever that's looking at our building, they saying, oh, okay, well, we need to make sure that we sustain their programs. Their programs are beneficial to the current community, their current community. And so that will give them an encouragement to back us when we go to them. Like, we will actually be able to step up with something at hand. So that's where I'm at with this, as far as going in. The next step is to make sure we got something in hand. Cause I do know, as a lender, I mean, as a, um, borrower, when I go to the bank and ask them for money, they ask me, what's your collateral? What do you have to back up the money that you're asking us to loan you? And so, like I said, I just wanna make sure we're put in a position that we have something to say, hey, this is what we have. And we bring this to the table. So, again, like I said, the input, everything that was here, I'm pretty sure I got good notes and whatnot. I'm looking for if you guys get it into me tomorrow. You know, um, prior to, uh, Friday's meeting, I would do my best to try and answer all the questions and get all the information you guys need to help us make a solid decision. And, you know, thank you guys for coming out and, and participating. I really, truly do appreciate you guys taking our time and putting in an effort to make something solid for North College Hill. With that being said, um, I'm gonna give each one of the, uh, committee members to give me, uh, two-minute final thought and as far as today's meeting, just today's, and then we're gonna adjourn from there. So I'm gonna start with Ms. uh, Genius. I'm gonna start with Ms. Genius.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for being late. But my final thoughts are, I agree with Mayor Nichols and also with Gaston. I think we need to get rid of the, um, asbestos and the mold and any other type of toxin, you know, um, that's in the, in the building before we can really come to a decision of where we, we should go with the building. Also, I wanna say, if the building was given to us, you know, um, freely, you know, it's, we didn't have to, have to spend any money, then why should we spend money to, you know, demolish it, to rebuild on the expense of the citizens and taxpayers? So that's my final thoughts.
All right, um, Ms. Brooks.
I'm sorry, what was our directive?
A final thought.
Oh, final thought.
Yes, ma'am. About today's meeting.
Thank you for reeling it in. I'll go. I think I have some clarity. Um, I'm appreciative for us here at the table. I've been like a squirrel gathering nuts for the winter, um, trying to get pieces of information to, to understand. Um, and so I, my last thought is actually a question. Um, because I'm not part of council, I wanna make sure I follow any rules. Our communicate, we don't communicate with each other. This is the only platform where we share information. Or, or email you or the co-chair. That is how we communicate or share information.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's it? Ms. Julian.
Um, so I guess my final thoughts are, uh, lean more towards in the direction of what potential options would be. Um, it sounds like nobody here wants to sell the land. Whether we keep the building there, fix it up, nobody wants to sell it, is what I'm kind of hearing. Um, that way, we have something. So it sounds like demolition and put something else there, or remodel and use it for something are the two options that are on the table for this evening and moving forward. Um, which you can then break up into steps. We can decide demolition versus remodel. And then, once we make a decision on that, we can figure out what would we put there and what, you know, kind of to break it up a little bit more, to make it easier for us to feed in questions. You know, to maybe make a plan for both. And then, at the end, come together and make a decision, I think would be the most helpful thing.
Is that all? Okay. Ms. Gaskins.
Um, well, first, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Wilson for allowing me to sit on this committee. So I have a couple of things, couple of goals that I would like for this committee. So number one, um, we talked about what the objective of this meeting is going to be in the timeline. Not rushing things, but like, taking our time and really going through what the possibilities are. Um, another takeaway is having a professional come and clarify information we may have so that when we make our decision, it is an informed whole decision and we're not guessing and thinking we know what XYZ means. I would love to know when we can begin the abatement of the mold and asbestos so that we can continue to work towards our final goal. And once the building is quote-unquote stabilized, where is the money gonna come from so that we can rehab the building? Those are the things that I am looking forward to having answered. And I think this group is a great group of people to get that answered, and hopefully, we can move forward.
All right, um, and finally, but I mean, this is the most important individual. Yeah, we wanna hear what you got to say. Your final thought, your answer.
Uh, in this group, I think we all are equally as important. And I think, um, it's a great group to make a very hard decision. I know everyone has their own, uh, different opinions. And, um, I think with this group, that mutual respect of whatever that outcome is, is there. I know it's not an easy decision, but together, I believe we could come to a consensus of what is best for our community. So I just look forward to the final answer. You know, sort of, I hate to pin it like Jeopardy, but your final answer, what that would be, um, and to move forward.
That all?
For this meeting.
Thank you, thank you. Again, um, I wanna say thank you to all the members.
I did have one thing.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I did, uh, ask, I think someone said earlier, if, um, someone could come. So we're gonna look into seeing if we can get some of those people here to address this group for some of those questions that you might have.
Can I say something?
Uh, yes, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
So I believe Julian? So I rem, uh, there was a question about, um, you piggyback off of something someone else said, I can't remember who, about RWB. And, um, I will say, from a general perspective, it's really a benefit, for the general situation. Um, I've only seen really one of RWB's properties, so I can't be their testimonial person. Um, but I think it looks great, College Station. But I will say, the more and more I continue to learn about development, um, and urban planning, et cetera, it's really a gem to have a neighborhood resource, like a local builder and local partnerships. Um, so if there, I don't know what the word preferred means, but in that sense, that that is a, a great connection to have in your own backyard. Most communities cannot say that. And so I think that keeping an open mind, well, I think in fairness and transparency, yes, multiple, because we wanna be competitive or people to competitively bid. But I, I don't want to ignore the fact that this, that's a gem, theoretically speaking. Um, and apparently so, based off the information I have, it appears to be that. So I wanted to say that about having a local builder.
All right, um, again, like I said, I wanna thank every individual on this committee. Uh, truly appreciate you guys being willing to step up and join this committee and, and, um, put in the, the fight to, you know, give some type of, uh, clarity and direction for the, uh, council, uh, current and the new coun, uh, coming council. Don't forget, you know, your, your questions that you need clarity on, please write them down. Email them to me. You can get them to me as soon as possible so I can, yes, you can email them to me. Email them to me, you get them to me as soon as possible so I can, yes, you can email them to me, or you can email them to Ms. Teichester. Um, uh just so we can get them, you know, try and get them um answered and the information you guys need. In a timely manner. And then um s- the next meeting is Friday. Um, November twenty-first, uh six to seven thirty again. Um, so I'll see you guys then, and the this subcommittee meeting is adjourned.